Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 4th regular meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. We have an abbreviated meeting this evening. We will start with approval of agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Tom? Second? Somebody? You, oh, Matt?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you kind of went out this way. Yeah, oh, okay. So, Tom made the motion, Matt second, all in favor. And we have six in favor and the student rep in favor. I neglected to mention that Brian Cisneros is away out of town this evening. Next on our agenda is public comments. I do not see any members of the public at this time. And so we have approval of the regular meeting minutes of September 20th, and also the non-public meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes? Gianna?
I motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second, Tom? Are there any corrections to the minutes? Gianna?
Just a couple, and I'll send them to Karen. The first is on page two of five. The last sentence of the first paragraph, Gianna stated this will be an ongoing concern since it takes away local school board control, but to change ongoing concern since the Learning Everywhere program can take away local school board control. Page four of five, paragraph five, we've got just kind of a typo. Don't needs to go to doesn't. Within the same area, bullet three, we've just got an acronym typo, EWP to EPW. And it might be a good idea somewhere in the notes to define what EPW is for people who are reading it. I do believe it's exercise physiology and wellness, I could be wrong. But yeah, see, I don't even know. But to have that in there so people are reading it, they know what it is. And then the same page, bullet four, this is kind of a question because I can't remember. And it was talking about the ELOs and it's referring to the transfer to 175 schools across the state. Was that meant to be state or across the country? Right, so that would yeah, so that would be it for that. And I'll give that to you, Karen, I'm sorry, I haven't sent it to you.
Any other corrections? I had one also on page four. After the four bullets, I would like to insert Denise Day stated that she hopes students whose interest and talent lie within language arts rather than math also have the opportunity to advance in their coursework. And I did send this to Wendy. Any others? Okay, with those corrections, all in favor? And we have six in favor and the student rep is in favor. Now, we have the non-public meeting minutes from September 20th. Can I have a motion to approve those? Heather? A second? Matt? Any corrections to those? All right, all in favor? And we have six in favor. Next up is our October 1st enrollment, Suzanne?
The enrollment is as we predicted for October 1st. We see a little bit of a decline for the fifth grade, and we expect that that decline will continue with each year. But as far as our predictions and where we thought we would be, the enrollment is pretty much where we had expected with the total enrollment of 2,091 students. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I do believe the student rep might have one thing that she'd like to announce?
Yes, open house is tomorrow at 6:00. And parents, you're going to need to like get your kids to fill out where to go so you don't get lost. But it's just a blank worksheet and checkbox that no one sent out. So, parents want to use that to check off, and it's welcome to all parents. They'll follow the schedule and go around all classes, and there's clubs there as well that'll present. So, parents can look at all the clubs that are there, too.
Thank you. You need, excuse me. Unanimous consent agenda. We have a list of policies for second read. We have appointment of Katherine Plourd to the affirmative action officer and a leave of absence. Are there any items in the unanimous consent that anyone would like to discuss? Okay, with that then, I will make a motion to approve the unanimous consent agenda, which includes approval of policy IHAM, health education exemption from instruction, JJB-A spectator and parent expectations, GCBDNR sabbatical leave and proposal, and JLCE emergency care and first aid, which current with Narcan language. And those are all for second read. Also, to appoint Katherine Plourd as the fiscal year 24 affirmative action officer. And motion to approve the ORHS, leave of absence from September of 2023 through January of 2024. Can I have a second, please? Tom? Okay, all in favor? And that is six in favor and the student rep in favor. Discussion items, New Hampshire DOE require critical shortage letter. Suzanne, did you want to speak to that?
So, the DOE every year will put out areas of critical shortage. The critical shortage areas are typically identified through numbers of certifications and other criteria that are set. They did not identify computer science as an area of critical shortage. However, we as a district did feel that it was challenging to hire someone for the computer science position both years that it was, that we had it posted. So, this allows us to declare a local critical shortage, and this just allows us to have a more direct route to support anyone interested in achieving a certification in the area of computer science.
Do you know if industrial arts was listed as a critical need?
So, there are some CTE areas that are listed as critical shortage area. There's an engineering, like a STEM certification that is listed as a critical shortage area. The construction area of the CTE centers, I'm not aware of that, is listed as a critical shortage area. It's highly likely that it is.
Okay, sorry. Does a person get certification through a different avenue by being employed then?
Yeah, so the pathway changes if there's a critical shortage area. So, what will happen is you'll have a lot of professionals that are maybe interested in going into education, and they may have experience, and that will be looked at a little differently perhaps, or other areas of teaching and learning that would be examined a little differently than if it was not an area of critical shortage. It makes the pathway a little bit more direct.
Do you know offhand what are the other areas of critical shortage that are currently in New Hampshire or district-wide?
There are many areas of critical shortage. So, there's some specialized areas, some of them, and then there are some classroom areas. So, today I was actually just working with someone on the critical shortage area. And so, there's kindergarten to third grade, a specific type of certification for that that's a critical shortage. There's a reading and writing specialist is a critical shortage. There's about 28 or so areas, so I'm happy to share that with you if you're interested.
That would be great, thank you.
All right, oh, yes, Heather?
I motion to authorize the superintendent to sign the required NHDOE critical shortage letter.
Okay, may I have a second, Matt? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? So, that's six in favor and the student rep is in favor. Next, we have the Barrington tuition rate. So, I don't know if we have questions for Amy, if perhaps Amy might want to come up if anyone has any questions.
Is this on, Alexander? Okay, thanks. So, it is my understanding that the agreement with Barrington requires the school board to approve what the tuition rate will be for next year. Tim Gellig, the staff accountant, had provided this for me following the agreement between Oyster River and Barrington.
Any questions? All right, and can I have a motion to approve the tuition?
Could we just state what it is?
Oh, yes. Yes. Yeah, okay. All right, hold on. I want to make, I want to make sure I'm saying it correctly. It is 19,718 for the 2024-2025 school year. All right, with that, may I have a motion to approve the tuition rate for Barrington students? Tom? And may I have a second? Matt? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Six in favor and the student rep is in favor. All right, next is our draft budget goal, and as I mentioned, Brian is unable to be here, so Heather?
Yes, and what's scary is I'm the second ranking member on finance, so everybody be afraid. All right, so we aren't taking any action or we're not asking for any action this evening. This is more for us to sort of cogitate on for the next two weeks, but it does provide some time as the administration starts to work through their process of seeing what people want and where things are. It gives them some guide rails, so they sort of know where to steer the ship in terms of where we might want to look for budget goals. And so, right now, the two largest factors dominating this budget are that the guaranteed maximum rate for the health insurance came in considerably higher than it has been, 50.1%. However, that is lower than other districts in the state are getting in terms of their health insurance increase rates. So, it is higher, but it is not the highest that is in the state. The second is that we have about $1 million in negotiated pay raises. And so, before we do anything, we have about $2 million we need to account for in the fiscal year 25 budget. So, we proposed five, or sorry, four options, and those are listed here. One is less than the $2 million that we're starting out with, and that's not including anything on the wish lists or anything anybody else has. That $2 million is obligations we have to meet in terms of salary and health insurance. So, the first budget goal is slightly under that, which would indicate cuts. The second goal is in the ballpark of what that number is. The third goal is the first goal where we're going above and beyond the requirements. And the fourth goal at 5% is a little bit more of, a little bit of a higher goal. So, when we talk about this in two weeks, we'll finalize these, and that will provide the district, the goals that they will work for as we go into the budget meeting. I think that's on the 27th. And so, think about it and come in two weeks with questions.
So, Heather, a question I have is, I guess, to even consider one that was below the $2 million, did you consider not even including that as one of the possible budget goals?
We talked about that at length a bit, because that first budget goal is likely, or could potentially even be, under the default budget, because these are requirements that would have to be incorporated into a default budget for fiscal year 25. However, we think it is a useful exercise for everyone to look to see what we would need to lose in order to make that number happen. That is higher than our low goal from last year. Last year's was three, so we did bump that to 3.3%. But there is a useful in the exercise of seeing what we would need to lose in order to make that budget goal happen. I'm not a super fan of that particular budget goal, but it is a useful exercise, I think, for everyone to see what it means. We do run a pretty lean ship. We got away with some of that last year by sort of coring out the CIP. We will be unable to do so this year because this is the last year of the middle school bond increase. And so, we have leaned that out pretty much as far as we can. So, there may be some creative things happening, and we'll talk about that as we go through the process.
And then, and then my second question is, just trying to remember, do we, do we need to, by the next meeting, set our budget goal so that that is what comes before us at the budget workshop that we have at the end of the month, correct?
Yeah, that's typically what we'll do. So, if I remember right, and Suzanne, you can shake your head yes or no, my, if I remember what we did, we did, the budget comes in for one option, and then to go beyond that option, it's usually beyond, that's when the yellow sheets come in and curricular-type things or expenditures for technology, we start listing those out separately. That gets us to the next percentage budget goal, and then we add a little bit more to get to the next percentage goal. So, the budget comes in, in your binder for one of these goals. My guess is it's going to come in for option two. And then, there's a sheet that comes in. If you want to go to option three, you're going to add these things. If you want to go to option four, you'll add these things on top of it. And then we, then the horse trading starts as we, as a board, start digging into the minutia. Suzanne, is that right?
This is mostly just a statement for people who might be watching, of course, who are not looking at the piece of paper or thing that we have in front of us, is that the option one was an increase of 3.3%. Option two is 3.6. Option three is 4.32%, and option four is five. And usually, the goal is to keep it not above 3%. The last year, I believe, says in here somewhere, is 1. something, I can't remember. 1.6. So, I just wanted to mention that so people know what we're talking about. And one of the things is that the option two that you were advocating, well, not quite advocating, but thinking might be more likely, Heather, was the option two, which is 3.6%. And that still would be 1.9 million increase approximately, which still means there's about $80,000 that would be off from the already known $2 million. So, this is something I wanted to make it clear for people to be understanding if they wanted to weigh in before the next meeting.
Yes, Heather?
So, there are a lot of things that are going to happen in the next two months to make all of this work in terms of not only how we set the budget up, but then we have to wait for apportionment to come through. We have to wait for assessed value to come through, and we have to wait for revenue to come through. All of those things, we will have. That is where we start to drill down to what the effect on the taxpayer is. So, just because the goal is 3.6% does not immediately translate to your bill will be 3.6% higher. There are a lot of moving pieces on all of this. And so, we have some steps to go. Last year's rate was artificially low because of the swept change and the tax hit that the towns took reclaiming the about $1 million in swept property taxes that are collected, that weren't collected in the previous fiscal year. And so, we lost around $800,000 in state funding coming into fiscal year 24. We did recoup some of that. I don't remember that number, but Amy will know it off the top of her head. But we did not recoup the entire amount from where it was when we were in fiscal year 23. Thank, yes? Yes. The fiscal year thing kind of messes with my head sometimes. So, this is just step one. This isn't where we will be. This is just part of the process. So, no one hit the red button in panic yet. It is a process.
And my question for Heather?
Go ahead, go ahead.
The 15% insurance as a guaranteed maximum could come in less.
From what, do you want to take this one, Amy, since you were at the?
It could come in less, but the way that they talked about it at the public hearing last week was it was more than likely not going to come in less because of usage. Yeah, some districts received the maximum of 25%, so 15 sounds like a lot, but 25 is worse.
I have a question for Amy. So, when does, when does, it's, the actual number comes in quite a bit later, doesn't it?
Yes.
So, we still have to, as far as budgeting, we have to budget the 15%?
Yes, this would be one of those years. I know some years, some districts will, you know, reduce it a little bit, or, you know, based on history. But from what Health Trust is telling us, they're like, this is not necessarily the year to take the gamble. So, we would put in the 15.1. Then come the spring, they do a reevaluation based on usage and what the actuaries, if what their predictions were correct or they need to adjust them. Our rate could go down, it will not go up. And Heather, just for that number for you, it was $386,252 less.
The other comment I would make is, as a board, we don't have to stick with these percentages. We can, as a board, just to clarify for newer members, is, you know, we could say, oh, no, well, we want to do four, or we want to do whatever. So, these are suggestions, but we will definitely take this up at our next board meeting with the hope of giving the administration a budget call to be able to, you know, do it for our presentation at the budget workshop on the 26th, so that they will be able to have a budget for us at that time or projected. Any other questions for Heather or Amy? Okay, thank you. All right. Oh, my goodness. Let's see, oh, no, we have one more thing. I was like, are we done? We're not done. We still have 10 minutes, we have to continue on. Appoint a survey committee. So, we, one of our goals, our school board goals, is to finally finish what we started pre-pandemic in terms of having a survey around competency-based learning. And a suggestion was made to have a committee to take a look at the survey that was put together by the UNH Survey Center pre-pandemic, and then use that as a starting point, and then, you know, revamp it and kind of come out with a survey that asks the questions that we now, because now we're, you know, four years, basically four years later, what questions that we really want to ask the community, so it's parents, the faculty, and the students. So, we did get, and I'm not sure if it was sent to out or not, but we did get the survey, yes, Heather is nodding her head, that the UNH Survey Center did come out with all those years ago as a starting point. And then, as I said, move from there. So, we wanted to establish a survey committee. So, I would like to propose having Tom, who was on the original committee, Dan, and Gianna to be our school board reps to the committee. And they will be joined by administrators, as well as, my understanding is, there'll also be a couple of parents on the committee as well, and faculty as well. So, can I, I believe I need a motion, yes. Can I have a motion to appoint the survey committee with Tom, Dan, and Gianna as the board reps?
So moved.
Okay, Matt, and can I have a second? Tom? All right, all in favor? And we have six in favor and the student rep is in favor. So, that can get started. And then we have our future meeting dates. October 18th, please note, is at Mast Way. So, if you are here, you will be by yourself. And then, on October 26th, we have our budget workshop, and that's going to be at Durham Council Office, starting at 8:00 AM. And then, our meeting after that is November 1st. And Heather, I believe the November 1st meeting is also an abbreviated meeting. So, we will probably have a lot of business at the next meeting, is my guess. Be squeezing in a lot of different things.
Denise, I think we may need that meeting to start at 6:00 as well, just like this one.
Okay, so the November 1st. Okay, make a note of that. 6:00 PM start to that meeting as well. All right. Any other? I know, it's like we have like four minutes that we're, to meet our 30 minutes for public comment.
I have a question.
Yes.
Will we be having beef stew at the, at the regular board budget workshop?
It's highly likely.
Nice.
And those delicious breakfast sandwiches.
Perhaps, some apple crisps.
An apple crisp? We do get fed very well at that budget workshop. Yes, Heather?
So, if anyone is watching, at 7:00 PM, the last in-person focus group is occurring. They have been going on all day for building administrators, central office staff, teachers, and faculty. And the last of the sessions starts at 7:00 at the high school multipurpose room. If you can't make it at 7:00, that's fine, just drop in whenever you can between 7:00 and 8:00.
And I guess I will ask, at our next meeting, I assume you will have an update in terms of just attendance-wise and as part of superintendent's search committee update?
We also have a workshop at the next meeting for going over the candidate profile. And, oh, yes, sorry, thanks, Matt. So, after the regular meeting, we'll have a workshop with Carolyn with NESTEC, and we'll go over the candidate profile that was generated from the focus groups and the online survey that, thank you, Matt, is still available and is available until Friday. And you can find that on the website. And so, and so you can ask, I'll ask Carolyn, and I can give an update, or we can talk about it at the workshop, either way.
Just to kill some time, I think the website has been working fantastic. The pop-ups have been really informative, very helpful, and not, they don't get in the way at all, but they've helped me remember at least two separate things, so another good feature from the website.
Gianna?
Like another thing. Regarding the stadium seating at the middle schools field, how do you access that? Because it has been observed by me and then by a couple of people who emailed me that people have been sitting on the sidewalk rather than on the seating. And so, I suspect that might be a question of, how do I get down there? And so, I thought if we could discuss exactly how, I haven't had a chance to go explore to figure it out. So, somebody can address that, that might be helpful.
So, you need to come down the sidewalk, down the hill. And then, as you come down the hill, come across the parking lot or around the sidewalk, all the way around. And you'll see next to the fence, you just walk between the fence and where the seating is. There's a pathway. We will be, we will at some point need to do some paving there for accessibility, but right now, there's, there is no, there is no sidewalk or pavement there. But you'll see the grass is flat, and that's where you would walk.
Is there any kind of plan for signage, including like accessibility signage of how to get there?
That's a great question, we can look at that.
Just thought of one quick thing. In our packets for the board, we routinely approve leave of absences, family leaves, that kind of thing. We should get back in the habit of making sure that those are marked confidential. They're not included in the publicly posted packet, just as a reminder to any school board members that, you know, this is a confidential document as opposed to everything else in our packet that is not. That's all.
Good point, for sure. Anything else? We have about 30 seconds, according to what I have. Yes, Tom?
Just as an individual, I wrote an op-ed piece that appeared in the Manchester Union Leader yesterday. Union Leader yesterday about the PragerU approval of the cash course, echoing some of the, I didn't write it as a board member, um, but I, I echoed a lot of the points that we've, we've been discussing.
All right. Um, well, with that, we, it is now 6:30, um, so I'd like to have a motion to adjourn. Heather, second?
I motion to adjourn.
And, I'm sorry about that. So Heather in the second? Gianna?
I second the motion.
All right, all in favor? Six in favor, the student rep in favor? We are adjourned. Have a good evening and.